Look like all this daughter.
Call the meeting in order. All please rise. I guess join me in a moment of reflection on a business that's before us this evening. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Clerk, please take the roll.
Alderman Basso.
Here.
Alderman Violet.
Here.
Alderman Clifford.
Here.
Alderman Key.
Here.
Alderman Kramarski.
Here.
Alderman Lewandowski.
Here.
Alderman McGovern.
Here.
Alderman McGrogan.
Here.
Mayor, City Clerk, Treasurer, and Attorney. All right, thank you. No special presentations tonight. Under the consent calendar, I've got two items. The approval of the minutes of the city council meeting from January nineteenth, twenty twenty-one, and along with the approval of the payroll and voucher list for the period ending January twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-one. Any motion by Alderman Clifford?
Second.
Second by Alderman McGovern. Discussion. Roll call.
Alderman Clifford.
Aye.
Alderman McGrogan.
Yes.
Alderman Lewandowski.
Aye.
Alderman Kramarski.
Yes.
Alderman Basso.
Aye.
Alderman McGovern.
Yes.
Alderman Key.
Yes.
Alderman Violet.
Yes.
All right. No sealed bids tonight. My report, before I get into the items on the agenda, just a couple remarks. Today, Cook County entered phase four of mitigation under the COVID, so things are starting to open up. Some venues are being opened up a little bit more liberally under limited situations. If you want to check the Illinois Department of Commerce website, they'll give you all the details as far as individual menu venues is what their limitations are. I think that's the easiest place to get it right now. As far as the, we've got, the vaccines are start, become available. I had a meeting Monday with President Perkwinkle's office, and a number of mayors in the Southwest Conference met with her and her staff. It comes down to, you know, we all probably have situations, you know, trying to get vaccine appointments and the like, so there's no sense in going through those on an individual basis. I mean, we've got a lot of things on the agenda tonight, but, you know, they are not going to make any appointments unless they actually have the vaccine. When the website opened up the first day, they got three hundred thousand hits. So, and then when they had, just recently, Sunday, they had a, another shipment of vaccine. That day alone, they got thirty thousand hits. So, it's a situation where, you know, it's gonna take some time. Some other venues are opening up as far as some of the pharmacies, you know, Jewel has it. Some of the Jewel stores have, Oskos have them, Mariano's, there's some other individual sites that you can get vaccines. So, it's just a matter of, you know, unfortunately, until the abundance of vaccines are available, it's gonna be kind of like trying to get tickets for a rock concert in the old days. You go on the site and hopefully you get, you're on, you get picked. So, but again, don't give up. You know, the vaccine is there. It's becoming more and more available. It's just a matter of time, but in effect, it's, it's gonna take some time. Unfortunately, it's just, it's not a vaccine to go around for a number of people. I think there's six hundred thousand people who qualify right now for vaccines and, yes.
I have a question. Are they gonna, like, run through the, I think they're in one Bs now, right?
Mm-hmm.
Would, do they go to, will they get all the one Bs, which I think are people that are seniors, before they open it up to the next round?
That's the, as of right now, my understanding, that's the intent, but I can't say for fact, you know, that could change. You know, as many things can change. As more vaccines become available, they may open it up, you know, quicker, put it that way.
Because.
From my, from what I'm seeing, it looks like March will be where the rest of the population will reopen for vaccines.
Yeah, but that might be a good suggestion if you're in those meetings with Perwinkle, just because of the fact that there's probably a lot more people below the sixty-five in that gap. So, if they were to get into the system, it'd almost be impossible to get in.
Right, yeah. Because there are some people in the system. Teachers are in there and some other, you know, public service workers and things like that. So, there are some other people in there. So, again, so, it's just a matter of.
Question on that. Did they discuss or ask for any municipalities, like Sayo's or Payless Park, to provide? Or could they provide any facilities to break down the crowd to smaller?
Well, that's one of the reasons they're going to private, you know, pharmacies and the like to make it more.
I meant, you know, above that, just to.
Yeah, no, that would, no, because first of all, you have to have the staffing levels, you know, and, and the vaccines, but.
Yeah, well, that's what I was getting at.
Yeah, the next thing is to actually get it out to the general public through private funders or private.
When you go on that site, it's a little goofed up or more than that, but you'll go on there, and I signed on that thing six or seven times in numerous places around. And you'll, then you get a message, we've seen you sign up. Then when you get to it, it's for people getting a second shot. Then when you go back for the first shot, it says everything booked up.
So, it's one hand telling the other not to do what the other wants to do, but it's sort of goofed up in a way.
But the only thing you can do is persistently try to keep doing it.
Right.
And finding different places until they, they come online.
That's kind of what I just said, yeah.
Yeah, 'cause I have a neighbor I sort of help out. He's ninety-four years old. He's unavailable. He can't get it anyplace. And I sort of feel sorry for the guy, but I don't know what else to do.
All right. I would like to take some time to thank the Public Works people. I know I posted on Facebook an appreciation to them, you know. All too often, you know, we get a lot of accolades to our police department, rightfully so, but sometimes our Public Works people kind of go unsung. And along with our staff here at, you know, at City Hall, who have been working throughout this whole pandemic, along with, you know, people in the rec department. So, thanks to all our employees who have put the time in through this whole pandemic. It's been, it's been rough and.
Mayor.
Mayor.
Yes.
And during, talking about the men from Public Works, you know, I'll, I'll agree with you a hundred percent. Not too many people are gonna be getting woke up at midnight, one o'clock in the morning, two o'clock in the morning, and turn around and come out here in full force and have all these streets plowed by the time you wake up in the morning.
Right.
And we, I, I really want to give my hats off to them also.
And that's the intention, that the streets will be ready for people to go to work in the morning, or get out of their garages, you know, so they can get to work and, and to their.
You know, I think, I think it's fair to say that, that no city around does a better job than we do. I mean, you know, when we get up in the morning, you're saying our streets look good. They look good that anybody else's streets. And, you know, my, my wife travels from home to Midlothian, and she'll always say that no community, you know, between here and work, nowhere do the streets look better than our streets. And, you know, I think that's a real credit to our guys, and it's, it's a lot, I mean, they're burning the midnight oil to get that done. And, and I'm glad you brought it up, because I think you're right. I think sometimes they're, they're taken for granted, and, and they shouldn't be.
What brought it light one time to me was that the mailman came in the bank and he actually said, you know, you guys have the best streets as far as snow plowing that I've ever seen, you know. And here's a guy who, you know, other than traveling around, he's in a couple other towns, and, you know, and he doesn't live in town here. He drives, you know, gets here from his home. I think he lives in Kanchikov Hills, and he just couldn't say enough about our Public Works people.
Mr. Mayor, there's one thing you might want to mention, 'cause I just read it on the internet. I didn't even realize this. But, because occasionally you see it, and occasionally there's not any chance but to do this. But some people, like, especially the stuff that comes at the very end when the plows are going through by the edge of their driveways, they kind of push it back out into the street. I, I just read this today, so I'm just giving it hearsay, but apparently, it's actually against the law.
Right.
To throw the snow back into the street.
Right. We have an ordinance.
So, you know, most of the time, it's just little stuff, but I did see a couple places where they push quite a bit out there.
Yeah.
It's when the people have their driveways plowed by big trucks, sometimes they leave a big pile of residue around. That's much the snow blows. I thought I'd like to say one thing. I'd like to thank the regional newspaper for, we were talking about how well our Public Works did. But when I was out there at five-thirty in the morning getting the newspaper, the trucks came by and zipped the street. I had my camera in my pocket, my cellphone, so I took a picture of it, all the way down, how nice and clean it was. This is five, like, curious, five, five-thirty in the morning, and I sent it to the regional with a caption, "The city that works." And I, and I sort of praised them that this is what our Public Works guys do at five-thirty, and it's, you know, the streets, it was on the front page of the regional. And to give them a little credit, you know, to show people that read that paper, they could see what a job they did at that time in the morning. So, I'd like to thank the regional for helping me out with that one.
Great, thank you. Sure they've thanked that. All right. The motion I've got here is, I need a little bit ahead of ourselves here, but you have to get ready. Think about summer and things like that. I need a motion to pass a resolution requesting permission for IDOT to close a portion of Harlem Avenue on Sunday, July fourth, for the annual Fourth of July parade from the hours of ten-thirty to one, two o'clock in the afternoon.
So moved.
Moved by Alderman Key, second by Alderman Kramarski. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And the next motion, I'm asking the attorney to contact NWRD. This has to deal with the parking lot over at Lake Catherine. We've got funding from MWRD for that lot, along with Southwest Conference of Mayors, and it's part of IDOT, which funds to the Southwest Conference of Mayors. They need the lease to be extended to, so that covers the full period of their grant. So, that's what we need to do that. So, what I'm looking for is a motion to have the city attorney draft an amended Lake Catherine lease for the length of, to begin the negotiations, I guess, with MWRD for an extension of not less than five years.
So moved.
Moved by Alderman Kramarski, second by Alderman Key. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And that's all I have. City Clerk?
Go for it.
City Treasurer?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. No report.
All right. Does any attorney anything?
No report.
All right. Any, any citizens?
Not as of half an hour ago.
Okay, fine. Finance Committee, Alderman McGrogan.
Mr. Mayor, number nine on the agenda is the annual motion to approve and adapt a proposed twenty-twenty-one budget for the city of Payless Heights. And I'll just add in that that is about thirty-point-five million exclusive of the library, which adds another two-point-eight. Second.
Moved by Alderman McGrogan, second by Alderman Violet. Discussion. Roll call.
Alderman McGrogan.
Yes.
Alderman Clifford.
Aye.
Alderman Basso.
Aye.
Alderman McGovern.
Yes.
Alderman Key.
Yes.
Alderman Violet.
Yes.
Alderman Kramarski.
Yes.
Alderman Lewandowski.
Aye.
Number ten on the agenda is a motion that we discussed just prior to the meeting is to adopt the ordinance providing the appropriation for corporate purposes for the period beginning January first of this year, ending December thirty-one, twenty twenty-one. It's the total I previously discussed.
Moved by Alderman McGrogan, second by Alderman Violet. Any discussion? Roll call.
Alderman Violet.
Yes.
Alderman Clifford.
Aye.
Alderman McGrogan.
Yes.
Alderman Kramarski.
Yes.
Alderman Lewandowski.
Aye.
Alderman Basso.
Aye.
Alderman McGovern.
Yes.
Alderman Key.
Yes.
That's the end of my report, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, sir. Alderman McGovern, Public Safety?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. As everybody knows, we, we hit an armed robbery over here at the Dunkin' Donuts over on Palaski, or on Harlem, a couple weeks ago. And I just want to let everybody know that that investigation is really still going strong. And our police department and the police departments that are involved in it, because there's more than one robbery, are really doing a heck of a lot of good work keeping up with it and trying to solve it. And it's just for information purposes, just so everybody is aware that it's still going strong, and that investigation is gonna. I'm, I'm optimistic that one day it'll be taken care of. Secondly, if you're out there shoveling the snow, this is a little bit different for public safety reasons. You get out there shoveling that snow, please use caution. Think of your health when you're out there shoveling, okay? Be real, be real cautious with it. Don't go, don't go thinking you're gonna be the biggest weightlifter, picking up this big shovel and shoveling it up. Don't go pushing the snow blower at some super fast speed, turn around trying to get it, to go out maximum, okay? Be sure when you're dressed, that you're dressed warm. Keep some fluids with you when you're with, when you're with you out there doing it. Take a break if you need it, okay? We don't need anybody turn around and having an ambulance called on them for, because they just went out there to shovel some snow, okay? So, that's my, those are the only two points I really want to bring out this week. I just am very concerned about our people turn around and shovel the snow.
Right.
It's gonna happen again this Saturday again, and just be prepared for it, okay?
Very good. Thank you. Alderman Basso, municipal grounds and property?
Yes, Mayor. I have three items on the agenda this evening. Item number eleven, motion to approve continuing landscaping maintenance of the raised planters along Harlem Avenue with CNC lawn care from April first to October thirty-first in the amount of nineteen thousand four hundred and twenty-five dollars.
Second.
Moved by Alderman Basso, second by Alderman Clifford. Discussion. Roll call.
Alderman Clifford.
Aye.
Alderman Kramarski.
Yes.
Alderman Lewandowski.
Aye.
Alderman Basso.
Aye.
Alderman McGovern.
Yes.
Alderman Violet.
Yes.
Alderman Key.
Yes.
Alderman McGrogan.
Yes.
Item twelve, motion to approve the purchase of three F-350 pickup trucks from Roche Ford under the suburban purchasing cooperative in the amount of one hundred thirty-six thou, one hundred thirty-six thousand two hundred thirty-eight dollars.
Moved by Alderman Basso, second by Alderman Clifford. Any discussion? Roll call.
Alderman McGrogan.
Yes.
Alderman Lewandowski.
Aye.
Alderman Kramarski.
Yes.
Alderman Basso.
Aye.
Alderman McGovern.
Yes.
Alderman Key.
Yes.
Alderman Violet.
Yes.
Alderman Clifford.
Aye.
And item thirteen, motion to direct the city attorney to prepare an ordinance declaring one irrigation water wheel and assorted landscaping blocks as surplus and to be sold on iBID.
Moved by Alderman Basso.
Second.
Second by Alderman Violet. Any discussion? Roll call.
Alderman Violet.
Yes.
Alderman Basso.
Aye.
Alderman McGovern.
Yes.
Alderman Key.
Yes.
Alderman Kramarski.
Yes.
Alderman Lewandowski.
Aye.
Alderman McGrogan.
Yes.
Alderman Clifford.
Yes.
And that would be the end of my report, Mayor, except also, I'd like to thank the Public Works for clearing the streets for me and for the city. Thank you.
Any zoning, Alderman Clifford?
No report this time, Mr. Mayor.
All right. Recreation, Alderman Key.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to assure everyone that, that our recreation department staff is highly aware of the mandates that we have to follow at the rec center. And as it's constantly changing, and as more people are allowed to be in that building, they're already looking ahead. They, they know what those numbers are and what, what we can change and what we can't change. And so, as the state flexes and it comes, you know, into a more free, open businesses and stuff, our rec department will respond along with that. And I just, I just wanted to say one more thing about Public Works. I've been in Alderman for ten years, and it occurred to me after this big snow we just had, that in those ten years, I've never gotten a complaint about our Public Works guys in the snow. Everyone is so happy, and we take that for granted. And, and those, I mean, all of us, we get emails and calls and that occasionally are complaints and stuff. Never once have I ever gotten a complaint about Public Works, so thank you to them. And that concludes my report, Mr. Mayor.
Rosa Construction, Alderman Kramarski?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have a report from the Public Works Director on the latest snow event.
All right.
Uh, the following is the snow report for January thirtieth of this year. Uh, this is the tenth snow event of the winter season with approximately eleven inches of snow. Light snow began at three PM Saturday, steadily increasing to snow showers. City staff was called in for plow operations at five PM. After six PM, snow precipitation was estimated at a half inch to one inch an hour. City staff made two full passes across the entire city by one AM on Sunday of the thirty-first. City staff restarted salt and plow operations at approximately four AM Sunday with good results. Plowing and salting continued until five PM, when the snowfall subsided. City staff returned on Monday, February the first, at five AM to clean roadways from overnight flurries prior to the morning rush hour. Excellent road conditions as of seven AM. Sunshine on Monday assists with the melting of the snow. This event was challenging due to the duration of the storm. However, the crews were able to sneak in a few hours of rest when there was no traffic on the road. We also received help from the recreation department with parking lot plowing. And as chairman of Rosa Construction, you know, it's been a real honor for me to work with these men all these years. And I also want to thank Ruben and Aurelio in the motor vehicle department, because they're responsible for keeping all this equipment running and on the road. And in fact, one was working primarily alone with the other one having, having an illness. So, I want to thank them. And if people have not in town read the regional, January twenty-first, we have a lady, Ms. Petrazek, she sums it up beautifully about all the, all the jobs Public Works is responsible for. So, if you have a chance, read it. And thanks again to everybody in that department. That's the end of my report.
All right, very good. Thank you very much. License permits to franchises, Alderman Lewandowski?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have one item this evening on the agenda. It's a motion to adopt an ordinance updating the city code, section ninety-six point oh-one C, specific nuisances enumerated to update language. This update is regarding placing garbage cans or containers on the front of premises or in open view.
Moved by Alderman Lewandowski. Is there a second?
Second.
Let's see. Roll call.
Alderman Key.
Yes.
Alderman Basso.
Aye.
Alderman McGovern.
Yes.
Alderman Clifford.
Aye.
Alderman McGrogan.
Yes.
Alderman Lewandowski.
Aye.
Alderman Kramarski.
Yes.
Alderman Violet.
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. That's the end of my report.
Alderman Violet, what is your?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move to approve partial payment number one to incentive form for the twenty-twenty CIPP sewer lining project in the amount of one hundred thirty-five thousand six hundred twenty-one dollars and ninety cents.
Moved by Alderman Violet. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alderman Lewandowski. Discussion. Roll call.
Alderman Kramarski.
Yes.
Alderman Basso.
Aye.
Alderman McGovern.
Yes.
Alderman Lewandowski.
Aye.
Alderman Key.
Yes.
Alderman McGrogan.
Yes.
Alderman Violet.
Yes.
Alderman Clifford.
Uh, I move to approve final payment number three to Kim Construction for the Manhole Rehabilitation Project in the amount of forty-four thousand three hundred sixteen dollars and sixty-one cents.
Second.
Moved by Alderman Violet, second by Alderman Lewandowski. Any discussion? Roll call.
Alderman Violet.
Yes.
Alderman Basso.
Aye.
Alderman Key.
Yes.
Alderman Kramarski.
Yes.
Alderman Lewandowski.
Aye.
Alderman McGovern.
Yes.
Alderman Clifford.
Aye.
Alderman McGrogan.
Yes.
I move to approve the purchase of a new Case five-twenty-one G loader from McCann Industries through the Sourcewell Purchasing Contract thirty-two-one-one, one-one-nine CNH in the amount of one hundred seven thousand nine hundred ninety-five dollars.
Second.
Moved by Alderman Violet, and second by Alderman Lewandowski. Any discussion? Roll call.
Alderman Clifford.
Aye.
Alderman McGrogan.
Yes.
Alderman Lewandowski.
Aye.
Alderman Kramarski.
Yes.
Alderman Basso.
Aye.
Alderman McGovern.
Yes.
Alderman Key.
Yes.
Alderman Violet.
Yes. I also move to approve proceeding with the risk and resilience assessment with Strand and Associates in the amount of fourteen thousand two hundred fifty dollars.
Second.
Moved by Alderman Violet, and second by Alderman Lewandowski. Any discussion? Roll call.
Alderman McGovern.
Yes.
Alderman Key.
Yes.
Alderman Violet.
Yes.
Alderman Basso.
Aye.
Alderman Kramarski.
Yes.
Alderman Lewandowski.
Aye.
Alderman Clifford.
Aye.
Alderman McGrogan.
Yes.
And I move to approve proceeding with RJN Engineering to develop bid specifications, bidding assistance, and oversight services for the twenty-twenty-one sewer cleaning and televising program in the amount of thirty-nine thousand eight hundred and twenty-five dollars.
Second.
Moved by Alderman Violet, and second by Alderman Lewandowski. Any discussion? Roll call.
Alderman Lewandowski.
Aye.
Alderman Kramarski.
Yes.
Alderman Basso.
Aye.
Alderman McGovern.
Yes.
Alderman McGrogan.
Yes.
Alderman Clifford.
Aye.
Alderman Violet.
Yes.
Alderman Key.
Yes.
And finally, I move to approve proceeding with RJN Engineering for on-call engineering services for the year twenty-twenty-one in the amount of twenty-five thousand dollars.
Second.
Moved by Alderman Violet, and second by Alderman Clifford. Any discussion? Roll call.
Alderman McGrogan.
Yes.
Alderman Lewandowski.
Aye.
Alderman Kramarski.
Yes.
Alderman Basso.
Aye.
Alderman McGovern.
Yes.
Alderman Key.
Yes.
Alderman Violet.
Yes.
Alderman Clifford.
Aye. And that's the end of my report, Mr. Mayor.
All right. Under special committees, Alderman Key, any business in economic development?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is the second meeting in a row. We have another business starting up in town. Um, the Manhattan Firehouse Grill, right at the corner of Hundred Twenty-seventh and Harlem, is currently under a, what they're calling a soft opening. They're doing some training with their new staff, but they are open. You can eat inside according to the mandates of the state. Um, I highly recommend the onion rings. They're fantastic. The light of the business sign is not on because they're considering it a soft opening, and a lot of people are going through there. And so, I recommend that you call ahead. You can, you can either go inside and pick it up, or you can go through the drive-through. And, but it's very good. And that concludes my report.
All right, fine.
Sewer inverters.
Cable TV, Alderman McGovern?
Uh, yeah, thanks, Mr. Mayor. I got a couple things I want to talk. First, first thing I want to talk about is, okay, Channel Four started this new program out in Payless Heights now, okay? And on TV, we're taking, we're highlighting our Payless Heights restaurants and some of our, our other local customers. Turn around and try and reemphasize that they're out there, support our local businesses, and try and get them going, okay? So, uh, and they're gonna be doing this every two weeks. Every two weeks, they're gonna be changing, changing over and turn around and trying to get new people so we can start, start getting everybody back in. And this is the perfect timing for this, because if we're going back to level four, I think, I believe level four is fifty percent?
Twenty-five still.
Twenty-five still? Okay. But anyways, they'll be able to go sit inside and enjoy themselves and enjoy some of these really great restaurants that we have right around here, okay? And second thing, the second thing I really want to bring out is, okay, this is, it's this time of year for the annual report for, for Channel Four. And it was greatly impacted by, by the pandemic. We, they couldn't do a lot of interviews this year because they couldn't get people to come into, into the studio. They couldn't turn around and get the social distancing output put together and everything else. So, the exception to the city council meetings, it was probably about the only thing they could broadcast live. And the funny thing about it is now we have the capabilities of going live outside, outside the, the city hall here. Uh, if you have a Wi-Fi setup, and we tried that, we were gonna try it for, for the Christmas tree lighting, except our entire TV staff was a little down in the dumpster there. So, they couldn't make, they couldn't make it to turn around and bring it out. But, uh, anyway, during the period of last year, Channel Four put on a hundred and sixty-five new shows. And they were broadcasting on that TV twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week, okay? And like I said, we're still trying to get, get the opportunity to turn around and go abroad with some kind of a live broadcast. Hope we don't have to wait for the Fourth of July parade.
Me too.
But, and that's about all I have for tonight.
All right. Any more business? Anyone else? Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
So, I just thought, I was sitting here as we were going through all the different expense items, and I think it's good, because the average person who sees the appropriations and thinks that the city with the thirty million dollars in stuff budget, what, what do they do with all that money? And I think tonight was a good, good evidence of the expenses. When you added up all the departments that presented things for expenses, it was over a half a million dollars that we just approved this evening, which just goes to show you, this, like, all the Alderman's comments about Public Works and other areas of the city that contribute, it's more than just you turn the lights on and everything works. There's a lot that goes on. I think that, you know, it's evident in tonight's report. There's a lot that goes on. I think that, you know, it's evident in tonight's report. And then, one last thing, I just thought, because of the fact that the Public Works did such a fine job, and when you look at Alderman Kromarski's report, I don't know when these people ate, but I sure hope that the city is taking care of them with buying coffee or donuts or whatever. So, that's the end of the old business.
All right. Any other?